Okay, we'll call our meeting to an end. We need a motion to approve our agenda. Just a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, who carries? Uh, nobody's agreed on the commonality of the city. Uh, so we'll move into requiring, requiring actions. We'll need a request, uh, we have a request, uh, to schedule an executive session. Is there a motion to do so?
Yes, no way.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, please, roll call.
Yep. Mr. Wilson, yes, is there?
Yes.
Mr. Crump, back there?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Is there anything?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the first item of the work session agenda is that, uh, the consideration of bond refinancing, and I have Michelle Bach with us here this evening with Piper Jeffrey that is going to explain this to us, along with the additions from Lori, but Michelle, I will leave this to you to explain this to the board, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Okay. Good evening, um, Michelle Bach with Piper Jeffrey. I've had the pleasure of working with this district for, I was thinking about, spent about a decade now, um, on a variety of financings over the years. The board last year approved a redemption of some of the existing bonds, and as we were looking to update everything this year, um, given that interest rates continue to drop, which is kind of a surprise, given that the Fed actually raised rates, um, we took a look at, at a refinancing of the district's existing debt, and if it's done as a bank placement, where we would bid out to local banks and other banks the purchase of the bonds, so you avoid a lot of costs that way, um, we think you can save about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that may be conservative, rates are actually really good right now. And so, what we are thinking about and looking to the board to consider is doing that redemption in conjunction with the refinancing of the remainder of the bonds to affect that savings, and, um, then by doing all of this together, you'll end up with, uh, bonds outstanding of about a million four, so you're reducing your debt pretty significantly, and that's all, that's all the general obligation bonds the district would have outstanding at that time. In terms of process, what we would do is draft a, um, term sheet to send to the banks, and then take bids on a certain date, and then, you know, assuming that the savings were there, you're not required to do this, you know, if the rate is not what it needs to be to affect the savings, but you take bids, and then you, you know, such and such bank had lowest bid, and here are your savings, and then the board would approve it or not, and then the refinancing and the redemption is done at the same time, and we would expect potentially to have this done, um, kind of towards the end of the day, um, if, if that's something that the district wants to pursue, and I would then, assuming you want to move forward, I would come out in the next meeting to take formal action, but it's relatively straightforward, it's just a refinancing. I would also point out that we would maintain the callability of those bonds, and that those bonds could be called at any time, so that you have the flexibility to continue to redeemize if you need to. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
You have questions for Michelle?
It doesn't sound like there's a downside to proceeding.
I don't, no, I don't think so.
I think that's great. We saved how much last year, when we redid?
The first time, when we did the crossover refinancing, we took in excess of two hundred thousand of debt.
Yeah.
Savings and interest, and, um, then this time would be, I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking we're getting three fifty to four hundred thousand would be what we've saved over the life of the debt since two thousand and five, that's, that's great.
So typically, does the, the bid go to one bank, or could it go to multiple banks?
You know, given the size of a million four, it's most likely that it would go to one bank, um, a lot of banks are able to take that whole amount, and then it's simpler that way as well, because the banks may not want the same interest rate. If there was a situation where especially local banks wanted to work together, that's certainly a possibility.
So they put a bid in together?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
So, uh, what, what rate do you expect?
Well, we, we've run this at a one point seven five. I will tell you, we just took bids on a ten-year issue, and that came back at a one seven, and this is shorter, it, it's only six years, so I, I, unless rates change significantly, I think it would come in closer to a one fifty. Sounds pretty good.
If it did, how much more money would we save than your, or how do you let us save?
Um, maybe another one thousand or so, just home park.
That's pretty aggressive, one fifty, I can see. You have, or ten million, you know Terry Looktivar?
Absolutely, for his, for his state, yeah.
He works for our bank, yeah.
Okay.
He does our municipal financing like this, and I talked to him the other day. Uh, one seventy-five is pretty aggressive, I mean, I'm not saying it's not doable, but one seventy-five is pretty aggressive too.
Yeah, well, we, the, the bids that we took, took today were actually for not bank-qualified, so that's, that would be a higher rate, and we had two that were significantly lower than, than, yeah, so I, I just think certain banks have bad rates.
Oh, I think you have to bid it out, certainly.
Yeah.
So, would you expect it to be local, or is it necessarily?
We usually see local banks being the most aggressive, because they have a real interest in the community, but it's not, not always. I would definitely expect it to be a Missouri bank.
I mean, the, the regions, the US banks can do these, but that size may not interest them, obviously.
Exactly, exactly.
We, we have-
Small, uh, small size.
It is, now, it really is, I know a million four is a, a lot of money, but it's, that's on a small side for something that they would do. We have a, quite a vision that do, that we do these quite frequently. As a matter of fact, we did a reissue of some debt with a hospital, uh, in a fourteen, very, something very similar, that's a problem that we, we did, so, yeah, that's a good process, and you can save some money, certainly.
And if the rates don't come back to lower than anything like that?
There's no obligation, there's no, you're not out of anything, because this is just a simple placement, there's no rating.
We would just continue on with your, we'd already planned to do.
The question then is, is, is the board in agreement, do you bring this back for consideration on Tuesday? Michelle, I guess we'll see you or someone here on, on Tuesday, and we'll go ahead and put that on the agenda for Tuesday, and, uh, we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for anyone? Won't you leave?
What's current rate?
Three.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, you would think that three, you might not be able to get lower than three, so.
These are, these are gonna be, uh, non-taxable to the bank, so they did it, you know, one seventy-five, it's gonna multiply that by what they say, give a tax bill, it's gonna be, it's gonna yield more to the bank, because you're not paying taxes on that portion of income.
Thank you, Michelle. The next item on the agenda is, uh, the renewal of the Aramark future arrangement contract, and I have Hugh McGowan, everybody knows Hugh, and Hugh is going to share with us on that. We're in the third year of our five-year contract, please.
We'll be entering into the third.
We'll be entering into the third year, that is correct, so. Hugh, I'll turn it over to you.
And, uh, I just gave them a, a little report involved in the blue folders with the pool tablets and the milk cartons. Talking about some of the things that we've, we've had a good year so far, um, in our partnership with the district, um, we participated in a couple, uh, different foundation events, we're working with the principals, particularly at the elementary level, uh, we're doing family night stuff, I was at Southeast last week, talking about nutrition, I'll be, I'll be a producer on there, um, we purchased for the district at no cost to the district, um, some indoor gardens, so there are fifty-five gardens in the elementary schools right now, um, we work with the principals on making sure our crew is all up to date, so we're having a really good relationship in those schools. We're keeping our financial and community involvement, um, that we committed to as part of the contract, um, you'll see in there some pictures from the, uh, Smarter Street event, and, you know, reinforced cape and stuff, it's got an extra color orange.
You were getting well paid, so that's good.
We participated in the back tack program, and then, um, we have a chat coming in in four weeks for superintendent scholarship program. We did a survey of the students at the junior and senior high schools, uh, to find out why they eat what they eat, what they don't like, what they like, um, I'm waiting for those compiled results to come back, um, but we got really good feedback this year, and part of that is because we have partnered with CMO, and we've done management rotations for the dietetics interns, and I was able to take the intern and give her some fresh baked cookies and say, hey, if you do a survey, I'll give you a fresh cookie, and it's not whole grain. And so, so we got good participation there. We've had a number of third-party, uh, surveys, inspections done from both the county and Aramark contractors, a company called PeopleSure, they come in and do food safety audits, and we pass all of them. We do daily safety talks with our staff, we do inquiries, and we're making sure that we're doing the right stuff. One of the things that we're really, really proud of is the first run through the junior chef program. We had sixteen, uh, sixth graders sign up, primarily we have twelve or thirteen show up every week, but they learn basic skills in the kitchen, um, we partnered with, um, the SCTC culinary arts people, we use that kitchen, um, with the intention of planting a seed of passion to be in the kitchen, so that down the road, these students will enroll in the culinary arts program, and then I can hire them, so, so, it's, it's really exciting. The, the most exciting week was, we brought in a full pantry of stuff, and gave them the recipes, and gave them forty-five minutes to put two plates, and you see the pictures in there, all four groups completed on the morning, two plates in time, it was amazing, and they, they made really good food. So it's exciting, the, the things that are happening in the district, um, with our partnership, we're really excited to be here, and, uh, continue to add.
How are you, how are you dealing, how are you making choices about the sixth grade students who get into that, do they get bust over, or?
I'm not really sure how they got there. I, I had talked, I had talked transportation about that possibility, you know?
They walked over as a cruise.
Okay. All right. I had talked to transportation about that possibility, but they were all there on time, it really was possible.
Is it elective, like, was it in substitution for just the other class?
No, it was after school, I think.
Traps or school?
They started at three fifteen, and ran till five, five thirty, depending on how slow they were doing dishes, um, you know, I had to come out and talk to parents a couple times and say, sorry, we're still cleaning, and all the parents were like, yeah. So it, it went really, really well, we, we taught them some basic skills, um, just, they, they got to experience a lot of stuff, they know some things that they don't like, that I don't think that any of them will ever go to a Mexican restaurant and order a mole, but, but they got to make it, and they got to try it, and it was really fun. We baked, we did breakfast, we did Mexican, Italian, appetizers, Asian, we, we did a lot of everything, southern, so it was really fun. It's an exciting program, and we're really happy to have Pedro here, um, to impart that knowledge, and his skills, he and I tag team, a group of that size of six graders needs to develop some skills. And everybody started with ten fingers and ended with ten fingers, so, so it, it's very exciting, so. Here are a number of pictures that I put in the packets that I gave you. So those are the things that we've been doing this week.
I know, through the work that I've done with the foundation board, you guys have been very supportive at our tailgate, and that provided you for that, so, and then all the things you do, the extra things you do provide the free for, for us to eat, and for, um, the elementary schools when they have programs, I know you do that a lot too, so, you guys are very supportive of the activities of the district, so, it's nice.
I know one thing that, that we've been very appreciative of, amongst other things, but the, uh, end-of-course exam, the MAP test, when it started, the end-of-course exam scholarship for students that place advanced, receive money for that, and I know that part of that superintendent's scholarship has gone towards that, we really appreciate that through the years, because we have several, several, several kids that earn those scholarships through that, uh, being placed advanced on the MAP test for end-of-course exams, so, we do appreciate that, thank you.
Now, one of the things I didn't mention is that we were very active this year in promoting breakfast at elementary schools, um, as we get into the MAP testing time, it's a huge deal for them to eat breakfast, um, we would like them, them to really get used to it, um, so we did a promotion where if you ate breakfast and you ate lunch, you got a prize, um, and we were able to increase at, um, a little schools significantly, and we were able to maintain that increase for a while, so hopefully, as we go into these, this testing time, um, we'll have more kids eating breakfast than we do today.
Hugh, are you seeing a difference in what kids are eating? I know at first, when, we went from the food triangle to the plate, and the restrictions that we had, you know, we read a lot about the waste that was going on, and, and people weren't eating the vegetables, but are you seeing a difference now? Are they eating more vegetables, eating healthier, or is it still the same, and we're just not hearing as much about it?
It's, the younger that, the sooner, the better it is, um, you know, we have some kindergarteners that would get hooked on eating salads, and trying fresh stuff, the fresh fruit and vegetable program that, that we have at Southeast only this year, um, helps to get them to try new things, and I try and get weird things in for them, so that they have the experience of trying something, um, but, you know, they're- Yeah, the, the smoothies went, went really, really well when we started them, and then they tapered off a bit, probably about half of what we started with, um, we, we will continue to offer different choices, um, I know that, I served lunch today at Hunter, and I know that we went through, um, a ten-pound case of zucchini at the school today, so, so they ate fresh, some of the fresh vegetables, um, but some of that, they just take what's in front of them, and dump it what they, what they don't like, they have the chicken nuggets, and throw the rest away, um, you know, we'll tell them, as part of the rules, you have to take it, you have to take a fruit, or you have to take a vegetable, and they'll take it and, and dump it, but I think it's less than it used to be initially.
Any other questions for Hugh?
On, on the, on when they have to take the fruit or the vegetable, is there a rule that they, that we can't, you know, because I've seen so many times where members have been a banana, or an apple, or an orange, or whatever, that's not even been touched, and it goes in the trash? Can we not take those off, we can't take them off the plate?
No, you can't. Once it's gone out to the student, it, uh, we're at a point where when we serve a meal, if you take a tray away and change your mind and put it back, we throw the tray away. I mean, we don't, based on, you know, we don't know how clean your hands are, and, and that kind of stuff, we, we cannot, the county law, it's, it's not, it's not allowed, one person goes up to the kids for us to reuse it.
Does that include, like, sealed beverages?
It does include the milk.
It does?
Yeah.
Really?
Even a fruit like a banana, a chip of peel?
Yeah.
That's a shame.
Yeah. And, you know, what would be ideal in those situations, is that they throw it in the backpack and eat it later, um, you know?
Take it home.
You know, they have, they have multiple choices on a daily basis, um, at the elementary schools, they get a hot and a cold vegetable, and then a canned and a fresh fruit, at least apples and oranges, bananas, only a couple times a week, because of, you know, keep them ripe and so forth, but they get those choices on a daily basis, so you should choose what you like, if you don't have enough time to eat it, you should, and I don't know, yeah, but I see all schools doing that, and stuff like that, there's really nothing we can do about it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Hugh.
Appreciate you.
Put a really cute pencil on it.
The pencil says you are what you eat, so, please.
So could you, I'm just thinking about Heather's comment, can you collect that stuff and give it to somebody else, or you can't even?
That's what I was wanting.
Or, or just like a shelter, or?
Recycle them, kind of.
If they would accept it, could you collect it and donate it to non-students, maybe?
County health codes won't allow. And it varies, the, the sad thing is, there are some places, there are some states that you can do that, there's just not one.
Yeah, I, I don't think that we can, can accept from me.
It is too bad, because I've seen what Heather's talking about, it's just a lot of waste.
Is there something that says they can't take it home with them?
No, once you, once you take it, you can do whatever you want with it, okay?
It's gotta be just like a school thing, I mean, whether or not the school would let them take it home, I mean, there's nothing saying that they can't take that home with them.
They want to stick it in their coat pocket, or their backpacks?
Yeah, it's theirs once they-
That would be up to them.
Yeah, once, once they take it, then it's theirs, they can, and you know, they can-
We just can't take it back.
We can't take it back.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the Project Lead the Way course.
Maybe they could donate it.
Who, who's that?
Maybe the child could donate it to a box, that went to a big bank.
Maybe they could?
Maybe they could.
You know what I'm saying, like, if you have a, if you'd like to root, if you'd like to donate a fruit, you know?
We can ask that. I'll, I'll check, I'll call Tracy.
You could have a wine box or something like that, that could handle that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with Tracy and see if that's allowable. As long as we're not, as long as Aramark or our school employees aren't doing it, that would be possible.
How can you not put tray or box, is it, like, you're bringing it to the field?
So when I find out, that might be, that may work.
I have Chad Murray with us, this is the third year, next year will be the third year that we have implemented Project Lead the Way courses, uh, this next year, we'll be doing, uh, civil engineering and architecture, uh, the, the, the talk though, right now, is Matt Johnson, who's our instructor, and I'm gonna let you guys take over, I know you're chomping at the bit back there, Mr. Kennedy, uh, the, the curriculum for the class that Matt has to take doesn't start until the summer, and he won't be done until right before the start of school, so, at that time is when the curriculum and his guidelines will be developed, and we will go ahead and approve them at that time, just like we did last year, so, I'll let you all take a, a run, have at, Chad.
Matt's class will start in first of July, after, before July, and it's, like I said, it's two weeks long, five days a week, uh, in Rala, and he, and he's taught the class while he's there, and then he has to take a test at the end, if he doesn't pass it, then he can't teach the class, Matt's engineering, he's been scoring ninety-five and above on the last two classes. So, we had our national review, and we're nationally certified now, back in November, this is our next step, the, the whole Project Lead the Way is a whole, is a four-course program, uh, you can go a couple different ways with it, uh, for going with the engineering, because that's the facility and equipment for, this next class, civil engineering, uh, just, I said this flat-out reading today, they are going to design, whatever it may be, a building, a bridge, whatever, construct it by a 3D printer, or whatever else, however they're gonna build it, test it, figure out why it failed, if it failed, and then come up with a solution to it, and figure it out, and it's not just actually building it, but it's also got parts in there they gotta take into consideration, if it's a building, roads, sewer, water lines, electrical power to said facility, and, you know, it's, it's a whole year process to do this, uh, and the courses leading up to this, we're kind of building the knowledge base on how to get to this point, just recently, they're finishing up right now, doing some coding, we built some machines, some robots that, that play your rock paper scissors, it's just like a scroll arm, they go scroll rock, piece of paper scissors, and, uh-
That would be Luke's.
That's, that's the one, that's the main thing, Luke's, Luke's, he's coding that, I think it's done actually now, and then he was also gonna code, be like a scoreboard, so, uh, these are just some of the items that they, that they, that they're learning through this whole process, uh, one thing that we're probably gonna have to do, not this summer, but next summer, I think I've got a teacher, I've agreed to, we're gonna have to start training them, and send them, another teacher to this training, uh, that was suggested by the guys that evaluated this from Project Lead the Way in November, uh, if Matt leaves, we don't have a program, and those people aren't, that aren't out there, uh, because the training is expensive, it's very time-consuming, and just be, you've gotta have, you've got, you've gotta know that stuff to be able to make it through, so, that's what we're gonna kind of start doing, but next year will be our last implementation, will be a fully, we'll have all four phases added, now, the next school year will be the final school year, and we can only do one at a time, so that's why we had to phase it in over three years, guys. Questions? I don't have a whole lot of details about the class, because simply they won't throw you a whole lot of details about the class, because, you know, top-
Chad, something we were talking about this morning, uh, are those kids that are involved in the bridge building competition, correct?
With MoDOT, yeah.
Yes, are they also involved very much in robotics, the robotics club that we have after school in the science department?
I don't think so, I can, I can tell you this, a lot of our kids are athletes, so they don't do much beyond that, athletes or, or in the arts, or, you know, choir and orchestra, there may be a couple, I, I don't know, I just wanted to answer that question.
I would really like to see something like that, I, I think it, it kind of ties in with the, the robotics and Project Lead the Way, I think some of that could go hand-in-hand.
We did have a couple that went to the Skills USA State Competition.
Great.
And competed there, I believe, they didn't medal, but I think I'm not 100% sure they were top ten.
Great.
So-
That's good.
Yeah, they're, they're getting that exposure.
Yeah.
Of that higher level thinking line they have to do.
Pretty good.
I mean, it's amazing, sometimes when you go around, go around, look, but it's impressive.
Yes, it is.
But we judged, yeah.
Oh, judge, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We judged simple machines.
Yeah, that's what, simple machines, that's right, levers and all that stuff.
And then when we had the national certification, that was such a neat process to watch, because I think-
And it wasn't stressful at all? I know, but for you, it really wasn't, for me, it was more immaculate.
And the national certification now allows our students, they complete the principles and the introduction, which are two main classes, and then one more course, um, I know they can get Mizzou offers a scholarship, Rala offers, um- I know they can get Missouri offers a scholarship, Rala offers a class cheaper through that. So having that national certification opens it up. And we're not just talking Missouri, we're talking Purdue, we're talking all over the US.
Globally, we haven't found one yet, but Friggers is gonna do some stuff with us for the two, for a kid that might wanna do some of that.
Expand on your plan to, to train somebody else. Do you have something in mind?
Yeah, you mean a teacher?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to him about it.
Oh, so you, you have somebody in mind?
Yeah, yeah, he's on board with it. He's not gonna do it this summer because he's finishing a master's. He just had a baby like three days ago. He didn't. I'm gonna clarify that.
Are you at liberty to say who it is?
Justin Cox.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's who I've been talking to because, I mean, that's right up his alley and he'd be the one that'd be willing to do it. Justin's, I, I don't foresee Justin going anywhere from here until he retires. So that's, you know, and Matt's not going anywhere, but. You never know. Wake up one morning, his leg fall off. I know. You can't find, you can't, I mean, they're not out there. They're just.
Tell us if we got some art that we have expanded into.
Right, well, and I wondered that too.
Every, every, every person, every, some of the schools I've talked to, they've gotten the point where they have to have at least two instructors. And mainly, is you have an instructor that teaches the first two classes, introduction and principal engineering. And then you have someone that, like Matt, that takes the back end of it with the civil engineering and COA.
Engineering design and something in design.
I'm drawing a blank.
But it's basically their, here's your problem, give us a solution.
Yeah.
But not only give us a solution, how did you get to that solution? You're in, if you've seen the engineering notebooks, it's a very detailed process that they work with Autodesk, Autopad, different software, three D software programming. And, and that is basically their culmination of all the years that they've learned. And, and that's the best thing about this class and it was like, you'll be up, Luke would tell you, most gifted kids don't have to think. They don't have to. They can make an A in a class without doing a lick of homework. But this class, you have, they're actually forced to think and go through that process. And, and, and I think that is the best gift we give to the gifted children or the smarter children or even our middle level, you know. When it comes to college, that's probably one of the biggest complaints. They don't know how to study or they don't know how to think. Well, they're learning it right now.
Additional questions? Thank you, Chad, Mary. Next on the agenda is the communication update for this month. And you see what Sarah has written down there. And Sarah, I feel like you would jump in too with this, but. All right, thank you, everybody. You can read the statement up there that, about what Sarah has tried to state as far as getting it positive out, about our school. And I think we've done that through our social media, whether it be through Twitter or the webpage or Facebook. We start posting the, the videos of our work session, board meetings, and play set on Facebook and Twitter. She also spent a lot of evenings and weekends posting on the Twitter account, dealing with the basketball game and such. And I think that was an awesome event. Everyone was, was pretty much there and I think everyone enjoyed that, saw the community come together, rally together behind our team, our community, and a pretty awesome, awesome time. February twenty-nine through the fourth, posted many, she had many posts of social media, visitors, volunteers who went to the schools or read to the classes. There was all sorts of posts on our Twitter account, Facebook about those that read during that time period. That was an awesome experience as well. She had a conference with David Luther, who's executive director at Mostrough, on March first, first, dealing with being positive, a positive communication and developing that. He's also indicated that if we ever want to do something along that lines, that he would come and have a conversation, he would visit with the Board of Education and discuss with us on that. On the seventeenth, she attended a webinar, sharing the awesome in school to home communications. March twenty-first, she posted that story about Ms. Corso at the high school, and I think everybody had the opportunity to view that, not only on our social media, but also that at KFBS. Just an awesome story that she was able to communicate with somebody that worked with the Rams and they were able to get that jersey, signed jersey for that young man at the high school. It was truly an awesome story. It was really fun and exciting to watch on KFBS. Then of course, on the twenty-second, they ran that story of Ms. Corso and the students. Then recently, here last Wednesday through Friday, Sarah and I both attended the MAFSA and the Mostrough Conference at the Lake of the Ozarks. I thought it was a very valuable conference. I think Sarah thought so too with the amount of information she's able to receive concerning that of communications, public relations and so on. And myself, I also enjoy my aspect of it as well. So I thought it was one of the best conferences we've attended in some time. Some other things too that have been going on off of, of her list that I have had as well. We've recently had state science olympiad. We had grade seven through nine. And on Friday, they are going to be attending that, that competition. Of course, mentioned in Twitter that we had skills, students attend skills nationals or will be going to skills nationals. We had a community service team, TV productions, and we also had Anna Playcheck also would be going to nationals, amongst others. I don't have the whole list, Chad, but I, I can send that out to you later in time. We had DECA internationals, which is somewhat difficult to attain and get to. We had Emily Braden that was eligible for that. We're very proud of those people that are going to those nationals, whether it be skills or DECA. We also had Missouri Council of Teachers of Math Competition for elementary students. Of the nineteen kids, we had eleven who will be going to state in that competition. So that's pretty awesome.
What grade is that?
That is grades three through six. In addition to that, recently got back our super tense survey. I'm compiling that information. And once we get that compiled, then I'll share that with the board, possibly during next exec session next Tuesday.
Is that the most kids we've ever sent to state?
Yes.
For?
For math.
Oh, that's, that's an awesome number.
The most we have is four or five. So eleven.
The nine, I'm sorry, anybody, the nineteen had, they did it different this year so that the students had to qualify and another competition first to, to go with the regional competition at CMOs. So we had nineteen qualify and eleven of those go to state. It's kind of pretty impressive.
Sarah, was there anything else to add? Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I have a quick question.
On what?
I know you're doing a lot with electronic feeds because I, I see it all the time. Are, are you feeding things to the standard? I mean, they're our, our home-based newspaper. And for those that, that don't do electronics, are they giving some of that information from your office?
They are. And actually, Chad is one of the best administrators we have, well, in giving me information. He didn't take me aside either. He is. Actually, his entire building knows that, you know, just to send me any information, I will push it out however I can and that is to Leona at the standard. I think more schools are kind of learning that if you give it to me, I, I'll give it out everywhere. So it's, it's starting to.
Process is so much slower, but I think it's starting to work. The process before was it was responsibility of the buildings to take care of that.
Right.
It's just easier transitions to go. Sarah, would you please take care of this for us? And I think it's working. Any other comments?
The Twitter feed stuff's great.
Yeah.
It really, really is.
Several, it's, I've said before, but it's just amazing the number of people that are on Twitter. It is amazing. Probably more so than anything, even Facebook, so.
Let me page, you know, Jorin Kimble? He has thirty thousand followers. I swear. I couldn't believe it. I asked him, I said, how did you get that many? He goes, I just follow a bunch of people and they follow me back.
Well, not only the, the interesting part of Twitter, which Chuck touched on at the last new teacher orientation or teachers meeting, monthly teachers meeting, was the value of Twitter, not just for presenting information like that, but for gathering educational information. There's all sorts of great feeds out there that you can gather information and good information as far as education. Very pleased with it. Any other questions?
I was just gonna say that since you're here, the hashtag contest and how the, everyone using the We Are Systen hashtag is wonderful. And it seems to be really catching on. Seems like people are really trying to use it, so.
I don't quite understand the hashtag yet, but I'll get to it.
I had to explain it today and if somebody else, I'll explain it to you. If everybody that does anything in Systen, whether it's for the school or the community, they can put hashtag We Are Systen. So then if you ever want to search for anything that's going on in the community, all you have to do is search that hashtag. And every time somebody puts that hashtag on their Twitter or even Facebook, it will show up in your feed.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Next, we have the discipline update for sixteen seventeen. This is something that was discussed back in, I believe, October. That was during the MSBA regional meeting here in Systen, and the main topic was that of discipline. And through a series of meetings beginning back on January fifth of this year, we started compiling, that came from a group of administrators, we started compiling some ideas and just brainstormed a lot as hard, what would work. And what I have proposed to you, what I'm proposing, and not this month, but down the road, are these things that we went through. The first item, year one, we're looking at for next year is that of implementing a third and fourth grade ISS classroom at Lee Hunter. And we've talked about doing this in the computer lab. Now, the first thing that comes to mind, what are we gonna do with the computer lab? And we've kind of come up with the idea through research and through talking with Eddie, that we could probably go with portable labs, something like with the Google Chrome, mentioned down there, it's about two twenty-nine each. That would allow then for teachers to check these things out and to have them right in their classroom. Chuck, you also checked with the building administrators, I believe you were blended as far as that idea, and the teachers liked that idea as far as having access to that, to those parts within their classroom. Also, what we need to do is separate our elementary. We have our fourth grade students right now going to the fifth and sixth grade. When they go to that, it's almost like a privilege for them to go to the bigger school. We want to take them out of that environment. Plus, it's also getting a little bit overloaded at the kindergarten level. So by developing the third and fourth grade only, I think it should help there. Plus then Southeast and Matthews can take those kids if they need to. If they have disciplinary issues, example during the day, they don't want to send them home, let's go ahead and take them over to the ISS classroom. That way, they're gonna still continue to work and they're not gonna lose time out of school. Okay? That is a proposal as far as year one goes. Year two is a little bit broader, a little more intense, a little more costly. And that would be the development of a first and second grade and a third and fourth grade BART program at our alternative school. With that proposal, we'd be looking at two teachers and two aides, one teacher's classroom, one with one aide, ten students total per classroom. The students then will be placed in the classroom for a quarter. And after that time period, if there's afterward progress made, they could progress back to the home of their school. Criteria, and this is not finalized by any means, would be, the setting says attendance, grades, interventions tried, teacher recommendations, social, emotional issues and so on. This list is still going on and on as we speak. Also, we've been talking a lot, because fine arts is something that has been associated with success for our students, especially our at-risk students. And we were looking to at possibly implementing some type of fine arts program, whether it be the band choir, music orchestra or art classes. But something along that lines is kind of what we've been looking at as far as implementing there. In addition to the possibility of some type of after-school program, simply keeping the kids there, keeping them engaged at a longer time period, kind of like what we're doing with our Southeast All-Stars. It would give our kids a little bit more motivation to continue on. And there's grants out there. There's also public support. There's been talk about the community wanting to get involved, something like that as well.
Would that be just for that grade level or are you talking about?
That would just be that grade right there. Uh huh, just for that group. And I include that back in school, stress of fine arts. That was basically just redundant comment. You can just leave that off. The third year then would be mainly that of a secondary type of role. We already have a suspension alternative in place with our students that test, our student test positive that are under the influence. They can take, instead of the forty-five day school suspension, they can take the suspension alternative, have ten days ISS, excuse me, ten days suspension, go ten days ISS and go back into the regular school. We're looking at something like that for students that could be suspended for longer than three days. Maybe there could be some alternative placement for them to go to instead of being suspended out of school. So that's still on board yet as far as what we're looking at right now, but that's year three. And that could also be implemented into year two as well. Questions? I want questions, if at all, please.
How many people do you think it'll impact for the third wave of this, of year three?
I, I, I really don't know, Scott. I think it probably would be greater than what you think. Things like kids refusing to go to ISS. I, I really don't want to give kids an option of not going to the suspension alternative. This is what you really need to do. And, and discuss the benefits for them and get the parents involved in that as well. The parents have been really actively involved with this suspension alternative program with, dealing with students that have drugs. It's been very positive. So hopefully, you know, hopefully that works down the road for us.
So all, right now, all elementary in-school suspensions are best to the alternative. Is that what's going on currently?
Fifty-six. Oh, no, 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 no.
Or the fifty-sixth grade, that's what I meant. But they're, they're sent.
Or they go to the kindergarten too. They, I'm sorry, what grade levels?
Fourth grade goes to.
Fourth grade only goes to third and sixth grade. The other ones would go to the kindergarten. There's been quite a bit of success at the kindergarten and I think it has to do with them having a certified teacher within that classroom and actually doing the lessons with them. I think it's been very successful. But like I said, when you put that fourth grade in that fifth and sixth grade environment, it, it seems to backfire somewhat.
And there isn't room for them at kindergarten center?
No, no, there's not. They have one single classroom there for them.
How many children are we generally talking about? I saw in materials of next week's meeting, you had some breakdown of in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension that's existing. And the BART program would be really for the ones who you're looking at in elementary that aren't doing the out-of-school suspension. So to keep them engaged and keep them involved in school.
Right.
And so the in-school suspension. And I get that, I mean, that would be great because that's, I mean, that's money and that's kids who aren't learning and they're sent to the school. But how many, are those accurate reflections of what's in-school suspension generally? What's in for March? You all know. It looks like ten, twelve?
Yeah.
Per elementary?
Yeah, that's very close. As far as on the average, yeah, it's close. Now, obviously, you're gonna have some months where they get a little bit more than the other and some of them do it less, but that's on average, that's pretty close.
Mr. Williams, I think too that, I mean, some of the elementary principals indicated that if they had to send Lee Hunter, they might be more apt to use it if they needed a shorter term, for example, one day where they have a student who's, who's having issues one day. And it might be good just to move him or her from that classroom for the day when they'll come back. So there might be an increased number going. That's at least what I would remember for you.
Well, I think you brought up that point during the discussion, that when you were at Lee Hunter, you used to have like a timeout area that if a student became upset or had disciplinary issues, they could go and sit and do their work somewhere else.
Was the step before ISS that we used?
Right, right, and kind of give them time to cool off, and I think that's kind of what we're looking at here, as opposed to suspending them, because that doesn't help the kids, it doesn't solve any problem.
Well, so you're saying you're going to hire two teachers and two aides?
That's the proposal.
Okay. And you're going to have two classrooms that have ten students per classroom?
Yep.
Now, when you're talking about in-school suspensions, you're not talking about, you know, like, I mean, we're talking about kids that are a minor behavior thing, correct?
Possibly, yes.
Um, hardy.
I think it could, I think it could be a wide variety of things. Could be classroom disruption, could be disrespect to school personnel or something like that.
So what I'm just sitting here thinking about is that at the kindergarten center, you have a classroom, and normally, how many kids would you say are in ISS there?
I don't know, six, eight, possibly.
Okay. So I'm just thinking that in our class, in our regular classrooms, we have anywhere from twenty-something to twenty-eight kids. To me, it sounds like, I mean, I, it would be almost a waste to hire two teachers and two aides for that small amount of kids.
That's for some, that's for BART, not ISS.
I know, I know, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, but that, you're talking about year two.
I'm talking about year two, I'm talking about the two kids. I'm just thinking, in the BART program, you're saying ten students per classroom size?
Yes, yes.
And I'm, okay. So I'm just saying, in the BART, the BART program you're talking about would be more of your long-term system.
It would be a quarter of time, it'd be during that eight to nine week period that they would be in there, and they would be meeting that criteria that I listed, they would be at risk.
So what's happening to them right now?
They're part of the classroom, and they're getting, those are the ones that are being placed in ISS, and those are the ones that are being suspended.
OSS.
So you're saying that you want to do this instead of out-of-school suspension?
I think it's just an extension of what we already have, right?
It is, it's just...
It's just leaving it down below.
There's a BART program right now, it doesn't go down this far.
No, it does not.
Yeah, I think that's right.
We used to start at third, though, at one time.
And that's why, that's something I've heard over the year.
What is it now?
Fifth grade.
Oh, okay.
Fifth through twelve, yeah. Well, the BART program's with you eight.
That, it would be nice, because these kids, even if they're suspended, out-of-school suspension for a few days, and then they come back to the classroom, it's the same thing, you know, and so if you put them in a different environment, they'll be more successful, and they'll make the classroom more successful.
It was recommended by those that worked there at the alternative school, that ten be the max number, because you're talking about kids that are at risk, that are, that need one-to-one type of guidance from those educators.
But do you, do we have twenty kids that are, like, right now, do we have twenty kids that are suspended out of school, or...
I think so, yes.
I just think that, I mean, I, I think that it's an idea, but my hesitation is hiring two teachers and two aides, when I feel like that we need to be hiring teachers for, to lower our classroom size.
Well, this will in some ways, by taking, you're talking twenty kids.
But they're already out of school.
What do you mean, I was...
I mean, if they're already out of school, they're already suspended out of school right now.
Right.
They're in and out, they're only suspended for a short period of time.
They're not all out of school, just include some that are.
They're out, and then they come back, and then they go out again.
If you don't mind, I think, I see what you're saying, I think the issue is, like Amy said, they're out three days here, then they come back, and they're not out every week three days, so the bulk of the time they're in the classroom, there's been some concerns with teachers and principals about what goes on in the classroom. You know, you're talking about some kids who are pretty disruptive.
So you're wanting to put them there for the school year?
No, at least for a quarter of the time. At least for a quarter of the time, but I did make the comment in our meeting that I don't think it should be automatic, they come back after a quarter, you know, if we feel like they're able to handle the regular classroom, able to be in there, and absolutely improve their behavior, yes, but I think, yes, you want to address those behaviors for those students, but you also want to give a better learning environment in the classroom as well, because sometimes some of those students, I'm, you know...
So you're saying that instead of suspended for a couple days, back in school, when they get in trouble again, and then they're out again?
Right.
You're saying that do something like this?
Right. Because in reality, the suspend, and I maybe should let Mr. Crater talk more, but the suspensions are, they happen, they're still, the kids are in the classroom much more than they're out, and so you're addressing, you're addressing their needs, because hopefully their suspensions will be reduced, but you're also helping with that regular classroom as well. At least, that's the thought that was coming from the principals, is that...
Yes, that's accurate.
Is there a reason that we used to do it from third on and not include first and second? Are there just fewer kids that are needing that?
Sorry, I'm talking too much.
We used to do a survey every year of the regular school principals and teachers about what they thought about the all-school area, we get a huge response, we need to start this in an earlier grade. We used to do it as part of the grant, it got the program started, but they've always, it's always been a seduce to have it far much earlier, it just was, I think it was a matter of budget, probably, was probably why we cut.
I think that position was attrition, because the teacher who taught third, third and fourth resigned, retired, whatever they did, and that was during all the economic issues, so we just didn't fill it back.
That's the way it was, I was there at the time.
But I don't think we ever had first and second, and I can...
No, I don't think so.
In the planning for that, the elementary principals at the time felt like if we could just have some assistance with third and fourth, that we can do the interventions in first and second. I'll tell you, I think that was a mistake, because a lot of times, your more serious disruptions come in the first and second grade, and I think it would be good to do something for that grade as well, those two grades as well.
I agree, I sort of agree with your comment about hiring more teachers to make the classroom smaller, I agree with that, but I think in, at least at Matthews and what I understand at Lee Hunter, there are just no more classrooms to put more kids in than another teacher in. I mean, they're using, at Matthews, they were using, the art room was now a classroom, and there was, there was a couple others, that they were, they were using literally every space that they had to put kids in to make those as small as they could, there's just not any more functional space in the school.
If you, if you go back to thinking about having, if there is a space at another school to put the kids, though, that you're looking at for, say, the ISS, and you're talking about getting laptop or some sort of laptop instead of having a computer lab, then you could open up another classroom.
Possibly, yeah.
You know, and I remember when we had trailers there.
Yes.
So, I mean, in terms of learning, I'm not saying, I think, this all sounds good, I mean, I think that earlier we can intervene and help and keep the classrooms from being disrupted the better, but I also think we need smaller class sizes if we can get it.
And that was my point, I think that, I mean, I think this is good, I think there's a need for this, and I understand your point of, instead of having it in and out, in and out, and all that, but my, my thinking is, is that if we're going to take a computer lab for this, I would rather, I mean, we had trailers when I was there, right in the middle of Lee Hunter, there were trailers.
We've had a very good experience with trailers through the years.
But, I mean, it's an idea, because I think it's very important that we get our class size down, I think that would help our academic achievement, if we could get our classroom size down, even, even one teacher per grade.
I don't disagree with that, I don't think, I don't think these are independent of each other, I don't think they're mutually dependent.
No, I was just, right, I was just saying, I was just thinking about taking that one classroom for this, and I'm, I'm just thinking, is there a place where else, like, is the alternative school, is it completely full?
It's pretty well full, yes. If we had, there's one room right now that's available, but we'd have to clear out another room in order to accommodate something like year two proposal.
And year three, so is the idea, we've had this discussion before, that our policies could sort of accept right now, address a student who may have one issue, never, never past issues, end up being out of school suspended, they can't make up their grades, with regard to mass at-risk kids, we kind of put them in an untenable position at that point. Are you, is your thought to address that in the year three proposal, so that, that that could become more of an in-school suspension issue? I, I still think we, we have, we have certain policies that if violated, school, kids end up being out of school, and if you're a stu, if you're a student who is okay Greg walked, has a number of past issues, it's a complete and utter setback, and some students who are doing really well in school can, can cost a scholarship, it costs a lot of money by being ten days out of school. Right, we talked before that we ought to have them in school, or at least, at least with the ability to make up work.
I think that's, that's the idea behind year three, is to give those kids that an option.
Okay.
You know, just like I was talking about with the suspension alternative for drugs, same type of thing, gives that kid that option of attending this, and I think it would address what you're discussing.
Is there not any way to do that soon?
I mean, that's exactly where I was going, but I think that's something we should really look at just years.
Okay, MSBA aides, the man here at our table, his friend, Willis Prince, I think, who's on the board there, and he's also, I don't know, something on MSB board, but anyway, he was saying, even their out-of-school suspension, those children are able to make their grades, I mean, they're required to do their daily assignments, just like a child in the classroom is.
The only issue with that, being at the high school for sixteen years, I can see where several of our kids are going to just say, heck with it, I'm going to go home, and I'm going to get my homework anyway. I would rather give them some type of alternative such as this, to go to someplace to go and do the work, because, I mean, because I know, we would have several kids, I've got several teachers back there, you know what I'm talking about, we got kids that would come in, do something silly, I don't want to go to class today, I'm going to get suspended because I'm going to get my homework anyway, and I'm going to go home. And that, that's...
I don't disagree with that, but I'm talking about first time.
Yeah.
And I think you're describing a lot of people that, I mean, that they're going to do that several times.
But the kids we're talking about that maybe mess up for whatever reason, and they're straight A kids, and for whatever it is, and, and they, they're taking a big hit on their grades for, you know, I'm just saying...
I understand that, but I think we have to take this as a whole, as a whole group, and tailor it to, to work with everybody, I really do.
Can I...
And that's why I think the suspension alternative, sure, I think that's why the suspension alternative would work the best there.
Just to touch on this, I just met with my secondary principals, and we talked a lot about this, and they have a lot of really good ideas, and they're doing some research with some other districts in the area, and in within the state, and even some that are out of state. Jeff Williams at the alternative school actually has already contacted someone, and they have an alternative suspension program. And basically, some of these kids, like you're talking about Jim, that maybe they've never gotten in trouble, and all of a sudden they've done something, made a really bad decision, you know, they could, very similar to our drug suspension alternative program, they could choose to do these three or four things, and then they don't, they do get to make up their work, they're not going to be out of school those days. You know, not that every student would choose that, but a lot of our students, they, even if they don't want to choose that, their parents might, they can choose that. And so there, there's some options there. One of the one in particular that he has contacted, they do some work with, and I don't know how that would look, but some community service type work to kind of, if they do so many hours of this, you know, that's, that's part of that alternative that they can choose. So it wouldn't be that, it might not affect every student, but it might affect some of those that their parents are really trying to have an impact and want them to choose that. And a student, like you said, that's never really had, done anything wrong, just made a really bad decision, and then they could opt for that. So they're, we're doing some research right now on what some other schools are doing, and what those options might be.
We could take this back, and I mean, we're far from done on this, so we can take it back and look at the year three, moving it up closer to year one. I still think the year two at the BART program, first, second, third, fourth grade, I think we need a little time to really iron that out and get that down pat, but yes, we'll take that back and look at that.
Could, I think it's part of one of the things we were talking about, about discipline back when, besides this exactly, and this is really good, I love this information, that we were talking about making sure and kind of doing an investigation, looking at our own records and making sure that we are consistent with what the discipline is, student per student to student, and can that be a part of what this group does also?
We could have that part of the discussion.
Because we want to make sure that, that we are being consistent, whatever violations are, that nobody's getting a different treatment than somebody else.
I thought that we talked about, not so much about the individual, the individual, but...
School to school?
No, what, what was going on as far as what they were being disciplined for. And, and we were looking at how some disciplines were stricter than others, but may not be considered as hands.
Kind of like, does the punishment fit the crime?
Yeah.
I think it's all part of it, I think, I would say that's all part of what we, all of this is what we should look at, our entire, how are we discipling, does the punishment fit the crime, and are we being consistent?
Right.
I would just like, if there's any way to accelerate that alternative suspension program, to do that, because I think that's been a problem for as long as I've been on board. You know, I think we don't have very many kids that are impacted by out-of-school suspension that way, but man, when you have some of these kids that are, lose opportunities, it's just bad. But I think it'll help in other kids that's either on repeat offenders, because I think some of them get behind the school, and they don't want to be there, you know?
Correct, you're absolutely right.
So the more they keep up with their work, the easier it is to send school.
Any other comments?
Looks good.
Okay, we'll march on with the discipline and also with our agenda. Let's take a look, first off, on the informational items before we go to the main agenda. I think I've heard from everybody who's going to be attending the Chamber banquet, the MSBA regional meeting, I don't think I have anybody for that, or the CMO super tense banquet on those days mentioned. Also, just to place on your calendar, that the SOTA or spring meeting will be at Pistop Cafe, I believe it's still called the Pistop or New Name.
Champions Cafe.
Excuse me?
Champions Cafe.
Thank you. Champions Cafe, May tenth at six o'clock. Going into the agenda for Tuesday night...
Hey Tom, can I ask you a question about that?
On...
Could we plan, if, if we're running late with our board meeting, could we plan to go ahead and take a break so that we don't make the...
I would, I would highly recommend that. I would recommend that we take a break, go meet with the exec committee, if we need to come back and finish it, finish up our business, let's do that.
I think for that, no, I, I agree.
In there, yes. A good point, I'm glad you brought that up. Tuesday's meeting, we have recognitions there, our counselors of the year, mentioned those, they'll be recognized, and of course, we got the certification of election results, we'll also have the reorganization of our board during that time period. One thing, as far as president, vice president, secretary treasurer, assistant treasurer, we'll need to make sure that we have somebody to nominate, our secretary was Brian, treasurer who is Lauren, and then also the assistant treasurer, who is Cheryl White with that. We will adjourn from there and then go into, back to the regular meeting with the new president, vice president at the helm. We have our main items, informational items down there. One thing to touch on, student enrollment, which we'll go into next week, where three, three thousand three hundred and fifty-five students, we're down thirteen this past month. Acquiring action items, we have quite a few items that we need to go through, that being the non-tender staff, and please look at that list if you would please. We have the A-plus program, which we have to do on an annual basis, we have to recommend approval of that. We also have the science curriculum, grades five through twelve. Are there any comments on that? I don't know if anybody's had an opportunity to review today's information during this time period from Monday through today.
I have a question.
We're also going to go through the paper bid, we're doing the paper bid a little bit earlier this year, simply because of the cost of paper supposedly supposed to go up, so we're going to iron that out right now, and you can see the, the bid that is going to be recommended to the board. We also have a roofing bid, going to recommend going to Osmond for one eighty-seven, six eighty, and as for the high school and also the fifth and sixth grade. It's audit time again, or audit bid again, and we had one and only bid for the audit this year, and that was our usual auditor, that is Vandevan, out of Cape. And you see the cost there, and those will be the recommended costs that we have, and we'll recommend to you. We also have our application of bills, we have Ferguson mentioned this month. More policy, GCI, that has included the statement that Rebecca gave us last month, that has been added to that, so please take a look at that. We have to amend the calendar again, we were at one seventy-five last month, we're going to have to go down to one seventy-four, which is their state requirement, we're still fine, but we'll have to amend that, that was because we missed that Friday, March eighteenth, state basketball finals. We have a budget adjustment, we have two budget adjustments, and, let's see, is that on? No, that's not on our regular agenda yet, is it? Do you have it on there? I don't.
The budget adjustment, yes.
Okay, well, I don't... Okay, well, I don't, I don't like.
We, we had trouble with that, so you may need to refresh, because I couldn't see it earlier today either. But it worked, carrying things, we got it to come up.
Okay, we do have two items there that we have to deal with. One with the welding shop itself as far as money coming in there, one also is money coming into the welding program, correct?
Free money.
Free money, yes, it is, yes, it is, very nice. We also have student handbooks and also professional staff handbooks, please take a look at those things. There's a lot of work that went into those to make sure they're updated, to make sure they reflected everything that we required to put in those, those things. We are making corrections, obviously, there's some incorrect information as far as principals, since Seth is leaving, we'll have to change that, and it also has the board from two thousand thirteen on there listed, so we'll have to change that as well. But we will get that done, make sure that we're going in the right direction, but please look at those items. In addition to that, we have the consent items, and those are the normal consent items. You notice that we have several that are resigning from the district. We have one other one that we'll be adding by our Tuesday meeting. That's all the information I had to share, if you have questions?
We already received enough.
Yes, we did, at three fifteen, three thirty today, who was, that was one of our teachers at the high school.
What's your recommendation gonna be for the changes to the policy, do you know yet?
Well, actually, reading that information that's presented, it still allows for transferring of the teaching staff to building to building, but this is dealing with, the way the statement is read is that administrative staff, it can be changed, but it's within a thirty-day window. And then, other than that, after that, or before that, I guess before that time lives up, it has to be brought to the board for approval. And honestly, that's what we're doing with it right now, the process that we're using right now.
Is that lateral moves included, or just for a change in pay rate?
That would be any administrative move.
The administrator, I was, I'll throw this out there, if you're, you're a teacher, a classroom teacher, and then you're, that you're appropriate degrees, and then you want to become a fifth, sixth grade principal or principal, that pay is set by the schedule, am I correct?
There's a factor, it's based upon sour schedule time, a factor for that particular position in the building.
I guess what I'm saying is they'll come to you and go, okay, Tom, I want eight thousand dollars to be out. That's what I'm saying, so there's a, there's a schedule that you follow.
Some districts do do that.
Yeah, no, I, I know, no, I heard that.
We do not negotiate here.
Right, right, okay, that's, so I, that's why I'm interested where the angst.
I think it would be good to share the factor with you all, and we can do that during one of our next meetings so that you can see where everybody falls administratively, based upon their duties. And there's a, a system that is developed that gives you the factor for the position, based upon your duties, yeah.
The only thing different I see in our old policy and this one is, there's just, you're adding instructional, professional instructional staffing, where it didn't have instructional.
No, there's a.
And then you've got a little paragraph right there that's been added.
Yes, that's what was added, that was recommended.
It allows to be temporary, like, if somebody leaves and you need to put somebody over there to cover, then that can happen. But if it's a temporary way, this is written, if it's a temporary reassignment that Tom wanted to last more than thirty days, that would come for board approval. And if it's a permanent reassignment, the same thing would, would be the case for administrative level, they have to be brought forward for approval.
Does this go right through MSBA?
Yes.
But that's not talking about what we were talking about with this policy. Temporary professional administrative staff reassignments lasting more than thirty days must be approved by the board. So that means a temporary, someone that you're gonna put a temporary assignment that's gonna last more than thirty days, needs to be put to the board?
Yes.
But we weren't talking about hiring, weren't we?
Yeah, well, that doesn't, this doesn't address, the hiring would have to be brought forward.
Yeah.
So I want this person to be.
Let's take the, the case of, you know, whether it be a classroom teacher, whether it be an administrator in another building, they would still have to go through that process, they still have to go through that process of filling out the application, going through the interview, and if they were selected, then they would be brought before the board. Right.
That's all the information I have.
Good.
We're going to.
Well, we're adjourned to, can you have more? To adjourn into. We're done?
No.
All of the, this A.I.?
Aye.